Good evening, everyone. I am Kim Melnick, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this eighth day of October 2024. Thank you to those who have joined us in person and online. At this time, I will ask Madam Clerk to announce the roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board chamber are Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems. And currently online is Ms. Kendrick and Ms. Manning. Ms. Kendrick, for the record, can you state the reason for you zooming in and your location?
Yes, I'm ill. I'm ill, and I'm in Virginia Beach.
Thank you. And Ms. Manning, for the record, can you state your reason and location for zooming in?
My reason is for personal reasons, and I'm in Virginia Beach.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Before we pause for a moment of silence, I'd ask you to be mindful of, first, the victims of Hurricane Helene and the massive 500-plus mile span of destruction and our neighbors in the southern Appalachian Mountains who are dealing with the devastating loss there. And also, for those in the path of Hurricane Milton, which is clearly going to be life-altering for many. You know, while we are making our decisions here tonight, there are many who still have no water, no electricity, and many boards across the East Coast are deciding just how they move forward with educating children. And so, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. And please rise as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this evening, the School Board has the pleasure of recognizing students and staff for their achievements. And our recognition for this evening is the National Blue Ribbon Award winner. Please welcome staff members from Green Run Collegiate. The U.S. Secretary of Education recognized Green Run Collegiate as one of the 356 schools in the 2024 cohort of National Blue Ribbon Schools. This prestigious recognition highlights schools that excel in academic performance or make significant strides in closing achievement gaps among different student groups. National Blue Ribbon Schools raise the bar for our nation's students by serving as models for effective teaching and intentional collaboration in their schools and communities. Representing Green Run Collegiate today are Rhian Patricio, Head of School, Tanya Waters, Coordinator of the International Baccalaureate Program, Erin Vickery, Academic Dean, and Monica Miller, School Counseling Department Chair. These leaders articulate a clear vision of instructional excellence and uphold high standards by showcasing effective teaching methods and offering robust professional development. Staff members at Green Run Collegiate use data-driven instruction to ensure every student succeeds. Collaboration among families, communities, and educators is a key component of their success. Green Run Collegiate is one of four schools in Virginia being celebrated as an exemplary, high-performing school. Congratulations, Green Run Collegiate. We are proud of you. Great job, great job. And this concludes the School Board recognitions for this evening. Okay. Are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? All right. Hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Okay, the voting board is open.
Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes, so the motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Dr. Robertson, do you have any recognitions this evening?
I do. Thank you. So tonight, we'll start with Rachel Amato, who was recently recommended and promoted to the Director of Food Services and the Office of Food Services. Congratulations, Rachel. And I see you have some guests. Congratulations. Next up, we have Pamela Johnson Ballard. We're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for her to be a coordinator and of Special Education, the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children. Congratulations. And I see you have some guests. Very good. And then finally, Mary Talindi, who is our new Coordinator of Special Education, the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children, to join Pamela, a new partner. Congratulations. And I see you have some guests. Congratulations. So I'd like to thank the families for sharing all of you with us, because they're going to be put to good use. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, item 10, Approval of Meeting Minutes. Are there any modifications to the September 24, 2024 Regular School Board Meeting Minutes as presented? During discussion. So hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the September 24, 2024 Minutes as presented. Motion made by Ms. Franklin, seconded by Ms. Riggs. Any discussion? Ms. Franklin?
Okay. I know that we had some questions to Ms. Tony Otto about the abstentions versus not being present. So I'm going to ask the PRC to take that back. And so we can actually, moving forward, have something clarifying so it doesn't get put on Ms. Tony Otto's shoulders. And making sure that, you know, we are making these decisions as a board. So I think it'd be really good if we could have something in writing about whether or not we're going to consider an abstention or whether we're going to just state it's not present so that we find consistency moving forward. And I wasn't sure. I think that, Ms. Tony Otto, didn't you say that there is a way for us to now have an option? To have, are you looking into that, I believe?
I will have to check with the company. Right now, the only three options we have during voting are aye, nay, and abstain.
Okay. Okay. In the past, we've always just had it as an abstention if someone had walked out to use the restroom or...
That is correct. And it would be noted in the minutes that it wasn't an abstention, that they were not present during the time of the vote.
Okay. So I just think that if we could just have that, something, to have something in writing so that we do have consistency and it's not on our school clerk to make sure, you know, that she has to make those decisions, I think that would be helpful.
Ms. Brown?
I'll take a look at which bylaw that would be under. I think currently, our bylaws kind of address this in Robert's Rules of Order. And Robert's Rules of Order has clarifications for not voting versus abstaining. And I do agree that that can get a little bit complex at times. So perhaps that's something we can look at. But I don't know which bylaw that would be under, so I'll have to take a look, which I'll do. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? All right, the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes and one abstention for the approval of the meeting minutes from September 24.
Yes, ma'am.
Since we're talking about that, I'll go ahead and explain why I abstained.
Oh, okay.
I did choose to abstain. I was in a remote part of Texas two weeks ago for some medical reasons, and I was unable, after effort, to vote or participate or zoom into the meeting, so I was not here. So I will not be voting on the minutes because of that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay. The School Board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12, public education in Virginia Beach, and the business of the School Board and the School Division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the School Board Clerk prior to noon today. The purpose for the Public Comments section of the School Board Agenda is for the School Board to offer an orderly forum to receive public comments during the School Board meeting. I'd like to remind everyone, please speak with respect and kindness. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that again. I'd like to remind everyone attending tonight's meeting, this includes those on the dais and those in the audience and online, to please speak with respect and kindness. The School Board also invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. Madam Clerk, please introduce the first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speakers will be Kim Mayo, Matthew Cody Connor, and then Diane Muscovak.
I'm excited to speak about school choice. I am the product of school choice, and I will explain why it's needed here. I grew up in a semi-rural community. We had no big old school bureaucracy. I attended my hometown public schools till age 15, then transferred to a Christian school near my cousin's farm. School choice was introduced, so my parents then sent us to a regional public school. This school was highly ranked, had more electives, and stronger academics. My siblings came with me, and we excelled. My sister led her team to an unexpected state championship in field hockey. She was then awarded a PG Scholarship to Andover, then another to play at Penn State. Today, she's at the top of her profession. My brother set records on his D1 baseball team, and today, he's a public school teacher. My mom dropped out of community college and is grateful for school choice. None of this achievement would have been possible without the freedom to choose our school. Parents want the best education for our kids. Several years ago, we bought our home in a nice neighborhood in Virginia Beach. We eventually put our child in our low-ranked zone elementary school. It had woeful gifted services, Chromebook abuse, behavioral problems, and weak site-level leadership per the climate report. Not good. I volunteered at the school, and I spoke up. I saw the potential. But it became painfully clear our child's educational needs could not be met at our zone school. We finally put our elementary school elsewhere. It would be very helpful to have part or all of this tuition covered by a school choice ESA. ESAs empower families to customize our kids' education. They can be used for tutoring, private school tuition, homeschooling, online courses, or special needs therapy. It's painful to watch children not be able to get a first-rate education because their only option is their zone school. There are great public schools in this city, but not everyone is zoned for one. Not everyone is handed a free tuition golden ticket to ODS. One of the most inequitable things in education is those stuck in low-ranked government schools with no incentive to improve or some struggling to pay their kids' tuition. Universal Choice encourages academic excellence and competition. Now, years later, my hometown schools are among the best in the state. Universal Choice, School Choice, also opens doors for teachers to have more opportunity. It's time all families, including our growing homeschool community, are able to let our tax dollars follow our children. It's not decided on the School Board, but thank you to all working to bring School Choice to Virginia. There's great national momentum, and one day, it will arrive here.
So we don't, no applause, please. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Cody Connor, Diane Muscovak, and then Dan Chang.
Good evening. Tonight on the agenda, you have the opportunity to vote on a resolution that supports safe gun storage, that encourages parents to be responsible gun owners and store their guns safely. Now, I know we've quibbled about statistics, and many of you may think that this is not your place. And I'm here to argue, tell you that it is. I don't know when the last time you read your core values was, but the very first one is, we put students first. Student-centered decision-making, choosing action that, above all else, benefit and support student learning, growth, and safety. Student safety. I don't know if you're aware, but earlier this year, the Surgeon General declared gun violence an emergency public health crisis. That sounds like something that concerns our students' safety. If you put students first, you should be passing this. I know many of you are people of faith. I know, Mr. Callen, you're strong in your Christian faith. Wasn't it Jesus that said, "Put your sword back in its place? For those that take the sword will perish by the sword"? That's what's being asked. Put your gun back in its place, securely stored. For those that take the gun, your children that take the gun, will perish by the gun. Please make the right decision, vote this resolution through. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Diane Muscovak, then Dan Chang, then Olga Torres Baker.
I received a letter from Rocky Malloy, the CEO of the National School Chaplains Association. The letter reads, "I am writing to ask you to bring God, faith, and prayer back to public education through school chaplaincy. Joski and I lived in South America for 35 years. During that time, we witnessed country after country fall to communism. It was the same story over and over. The people were in denial while the government was being taken over from the inside out. People who hated God created social divisions, pitting people against one another. The biggest target was the family, separating children from their parents, and it's happening in America today. Our nation is at a critical point politically, socially, and spiritually. Denial is not a solution. A great place to start restoring our country to its spiritual foundation is by putting God, faith, and prayer back into public education. Besides making schools safer, the presence of chaplains improve confidence, improve grades, and subdue anger, amongst other things. As God's witnesses, chaplains are also parental assets on campus protecting their rights and keeping families united. School chaplains are the legal way for God to return to education because chaplains are God representatives, not church representatives. There are no laws in the U.S. against God. Together, we can restore our nation's Christian heritage. Education is the foundation we must rebuild, and school chaplains are the first step by bringing God, faith, and prayer back to school. As we stand at the crossroads, we are reminded of the unity and faith required to rebuild the temple in Jerusalem by coming together. We, like them, can rebuild what has been lost in our culture, ensuring that the nation's next generation will grow up loving the Lord. Our union depends on the morality that comes from faith. You and I are privileged to lead in this historical mission restoring God's presence in public education for the first time since 1962. From a biblical point of view, I need to comment on the Virginia Beach School Board's decision to pass a resolution to honor October as LGBTQ month. This decision supports gender confusion. I feel so sorry for these children being subject to this confusion. I challenge you to read what God has to say about gender confusion and homosexuality. There are more than 97 biblical verses that comment on homosexuality, two of which are Jude, Chapter 1, Verse 7, which comments on the results of Sodom and Gomorrah, and Robens 1:26 through 28. These are just two of the many. So let's team up and change hearts, one person at a time, starting at a young age. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dan Chang, then Olga Torres Baker, and then Susan Saltiziak.
Before you start the clock, and I'm not correcting you, Ms. Melnick, but I wish you would look at School Board Bylaw 1-48.
I'm sorry, please, you have to start the clock. I can't have him...
Okay. So, at the last School Board meeting, one speaker did not follow the guidelines given by Mrs. Melnick to speak with respect and kindness. The speaker's comments were not K through 12, but personal derogatory comments regarding certain School Board members. She called 50% of the School Board "the bigot brigade". To one School Board member, she said that "the board members' faces make her sick". Each Board member knows that I do not agree with some of your positions, but my remarks are factual and not personal. Mrs. Melnick, why wasn't this speaker gavelled and told not to make these comments? Does "speak with respect and kindness" not apply to all speakers? New construction guidance and direction. Mr. Freeman is asking the Board to reprioritize CIP projects to proceed with the Princess Anne High School replacement project in this budget cycle. The cover sheet states the budget impact is TBD. But how can there be a TBD for budget impacts? This budget, this project was originally part of the Ballard PPEA and was determined to be unaffordable. How can this School Board give guidance without knowing the full budget impacts? There is adequate cost information from the Ballard PPEA proposal to determine the costs, which were unaffordable. This is another example of Mr. Freeman requesting direction without stating the cost to the taxpayers. I hope this does not include a tax increase or debt. Compass to 2030 Strategic Framework. I thought the goals of this School Board and VB CPS was education. I reviewed the strategic framework for Compass 2030, and it has very little for education or vocational skills. In fact, you might say it's a strategic framework to implement and follow social-emotional learning, SEL. You are here to educate, not restructure families and society. There is only one goal that resembles education. The four other goals are social-emotional-related goals. Also, the composition of this ad hoc strategic planning committee for the development of this is interesting. Two parents, one student, the president of the VB Education Association, Reed Teachers Union. And oh, by the way, only 9% of VB CPS teachers are members. How are their parents chosen? What is the average, why isn't an average taxpayer citizen on this committee? Why is the former leader of the union automatically included? Were these meetings public? What did the ad hoc strategic committee contribute? Was this framework developed by Panorama Education? This needs to be reviewed more closely, as there is a rollout plan that is very quick, April 2025.
Our next speaker is Olga Torres Baker, Susan Saltiziak, and then Laurel Selacker.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Virginia Beach City Public Schools Board. I am Olga Torres Baker, and I'm here today on behalf of the City of Virginia Beach Minority Business Council as a member of the Executive Board in support of three items. One, opportunities to connect with local minority-owned businesses to assist in fostering partnerships with minority-owned businesses, which can enhance student learning experiences. For example, initiatives such as mentorship programs, internships, or support or sponsorships that could benefit both students and local business community members. Two, to extend an invitation to the upcoming Minority Business Council's Fall Conference and Expo on Thursday, November 7, from 12 to 5 PM at the Virginia Beach Convention Center. We would be thrilled to have representation from the VB CPS Procurement Department as a way to help support your goals to promote supplier diversity in school contracts. Three. And lastly, the 2025 disparity study, which is designed to provide a benchmark point that will score the city on its efforts to encourage underrepresented business owners to bid on city contracts and help determine what, if any, improvements are needed to optimize the process. We wish to welcome your participation and support of the study in any way, shape, or form as a way to advocate for increased inclusion of minority-owned businesses in school district contracts. Your support and participation can lead to even more equitable economic opportunities, which help to strengthen community ties. Lastly, lastly, I wish to recognize that VB CPS also supports the Minority Business Council with the liaison that comes to our meetings as often as it can. So, thank you so much, Ty, for joining us. Thank you so much, everyone.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Saltiziak, then Laurel Selacker, and then Elizabeth Shore.
Good evening. Thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to speak today about a topic that touches the lives of many, the importance of securing firearms, particularly in relation to mental health and safety. As a therapist, I have witnessed firsthand the profound impact that access to lethal means can have on individuals struggling with mental health challenges. The statistics are sobering. Suicide is a leading cause of death in many places, and firearms are often the method of choice. This correlation isn't just a statistic. It represents real lives, real families, and real pain. Imagine a young person battling depression or anxiety, feeling overwhelmed by their circumstances. In a moment of acute distress, access to a firearm can turn a moment of crisis into a tragedy. This is not just theoretical, it is a reality that we must address. Research consistently shows that limiting access to lethal means, especially firearms, can significantly reduce the risk of suicide. Securing guns is not about taking away rights, it's about protecting lives. Just as we secure medications and other potentially harmful items in our homes, we must extend that same care to firearms. This includes safe storage practices, such as using locked cabinets, safes, or trigger locks. Now let's focus on a crucial area where we can make a tangible impact in our schools. We urge the School Board to adopt the resolution on securing firearms within our communities. Schools are not just educational institutions, they are safe havens where our children learn, grow, and build their futures. By adopting a secure gun resolution, our School Board can lead by example, promoting a culture of safety and responsibility. This resolution would encourage families to discuss firearm storage openly, create awareness about risks associated with unsafely stored firearms, and provide resources for safe storage options. Moreover, a resolution would signal to the community that the school prioritizes the well-being of its students and is committed to preventing tragedies before they occur. It demonstrates proactive leadership in addressing mental health... It demonstrates proactive leadership in addressing mental health and safety, creating a ripple effect that extends beyond the school grounds. In conclusion, securing firearms is a vital component of ensuring the safety and well-being of our communities. It's about compassion, responsibility, and a commitment to protecting one another. I encourage all of you to advocate for this resolution and to promote the secure storage of firearms. Together, we can foster a culture of safety and support one that provides, prioritizes the lives of our children and families. And just as a second add-on, I want, as the parent of a queer child who has had to listen with a heavy heart to some of the speakers tonight, I want to thank you again for recognizing her to be present in our schools and her history. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Laurel Selacker, then Elizabeth Shore, then Paula Chang. Laurel Selacker. Elizabeth Shore. Is Elizabeth Shore? No. And Paula Chang.
Good evening. Government votes has consequences with the result of a meeting last week, last time with Mrs. Riggs, Anderson, Owens, Melnick, and the deciding vote of District One Chair, Vice Chair Jennifer Franklin. U five voted to further sexualize in our schools are the children by passing the LGBTQ resolution. This robs childhood innocence and dignity with political manipulation when you should just leave them alone because your interference in their development harms these children. You should recognize your actions soften children for predators. You manipulate private feelings of gay and straight students and those struggling with their identity and intentionally invade their privacy for your own aims when you should stay out of their heads. Along with District One Jennifer Franklin, you all diabolically destroy the innocence of children that you have the duty to protect. You entrap them with public displays of a student's private issues and intentionally weaken parental guidance and authority that actually protects students. This oversteps bounds as you are here to educate and not practice social engineering. Your vote last meeting resulted in this signage in the VB CPS schools that has been removed because obviously it wasn't right. It's an elementary school announcing LGBTQ Month. Dr. Robertson, standards are lowered when we allow public advertising of the sexualization of schools in our school system. And one must ask what standards you have set for the books this month for LGBTQ that are being encouraged. An individual is challenging these books as subject to the vacuous argument that we are book banners when we're not. This is a known lie as we are objecting to not the existence of books, but to the appropriateness of the age of children when they're presented. So how, Dr. Robertson, are you presenting, protecting children in that regard? This board also falsely touts equity and inclusion when it's convenient, yet denies equal treatment for all when it is not convenient. You have this resolution, yet never have you celebrated and included straight students. You never address the reality that we are God's perfect creatures born with chromosomes which would determine our irrefutable biologic sex. Surgeons, pharmaceuticals, and changing birth certificates cannot alter that. Some people are born straight, some are gay, and some wishing when they are young and sometimes when they're older to be a different sex. So leave them alone and let them grow. There is a phrase about government, and you all are government, that you should stay out of people's bedrooms. So this applies here. Stay out of their beds and their heads and let them be children with time to figure for themselves who they are and how they want to live, and not how you think they should. And I'll just add, Mrs. Melnick, that I think what my husband was going to point out to you is the decorum in Order School Board Meeting Bylaw one forty-eight, which actually does say that we can clap. Thank you.
Our next, our next speaker is Martha Baker, then Amanda Faulkner, and then Melinda Rogers.
Good evening to the school board. Thank you for serving our community. As a twenty-five-year resident of Virginia Beach, homeowner, taxpayer, parent of three VB CPS graduates, grandparent of ten, six of which have attended VB CPS, a retired teacher with nineteen years in VB CPS and fifteen years in other school settings, I am deeply disturbed by the resolution which was passed in September designating October as LBGTQIA plus History Month. VB CPS already has anti-bullying policies which cover all who are targeted by bullies. I believe we all want our children, our youth, to grow into mature adults. As a teacher, I've worked with students from every race, religion, background, social status, family situation, and mental and physical condition with equal love, care, and concern for their present and their futures. Children want to know we care. I know someone truly cares about me when they speak the truth, even when it might initially hurt or offend me. Telling children and teenagers that they can choose their gender is not caring and loving, but damaging and prolonging their inability to accept the realities of life. When I began my teaching career in the VB CPS, a very wise educator told me, "Never lie to your students." And I am now asking you, do not lie to our students. Humans are created male and female. We do not get a choice. You all know that. It is an irrefutable truth, an obvious fact of nature. If a child becomes confused about their sex, responsible adults help the child accept and understand their sex rather than encouraging them to reject how they were created and explore a plethora of options. This exploration often leads to taking dangerous medications and getting life-altering surgeries, which can create a lifelong medical patient and pharmaceutical-dependent individual. Helping young people accept reality is the step toward maturity. Our goal as educators is to raise mature, self-governing, and responsible adults. It is inappropriate to promote the LGBTQIA plus lifestyles in the K through twelve public education of children, highlighting students who are suffering from gender dysphoria, forces unnecessary conversations with elementary school children and middle-school-aged children who will now be asking questions to try to understand what it means. This topic is not age-appropriate nor helpful for young children and a distraction from the important skills they need to be learning. Students who are struggling with gender dysphoria and other sexual issues need the help and support of family and professionals. Creating a month across the entire school system to celebrate the history of sexual identity crisis promotes the flawed idea of choosing a sexual identity and alternative lifestyles rather than seeking to help confuse teenagers.
And that is time. Our next speaker, our next speaker is Amanda Faulkner, then Melinda Rogers, then Pat Gesinski.
Before you start, I'm sorry, we do have a longstanding history of not clapping, and everybody's abided by that. It's distracting. And so this is great, and I thank you. It's been guidance from our attorney, and so you may proceed.
Good evening, team. Thank you for having me. I appreciate your service to our community. I am a member of our military, and I know that it is of value, what you do for us. And even, even sitting here tonight and listening to people yell at you, I appreciate your time. I'm also a gun owner who supports the right to bear arms and our responsibility that comes with that. I'm speaking tonight in support of our secure storage resolution because, as we all know, keeping our children safe is a priority we can't compromise on. During the last meeting, a common myth was brought up that locking firearms make them inaccessible for self-defense. This is a dangerous line of thinking. That is why over three hundred fifty kids a year are unintentionally shot when they access a fire home in their own home. It's why over the past decade, we've seen teens in mental health crisis committing suicide by firearm increase by forty-four percent. The fact is, locking up firearms doesn't mean they're inaccessible for self-defense. Modern safes and storage devices are designed to allow quick access while keeping firearms secure from those who shouldn't have access, like children and teens. In fact, a biometric home safe can open in as little as one to two seconds. A digital lock can only take up to six seconds, and even a mechanical safe with a key takes about fifteen, ten to fifteen seconds to access. Responsible gun owners know that the simple act of securing a firearm can prevent tragedies and reduce the risk of theft or misuse by children. This resolution raises awareness for a truly life-threatening situation in our own students' homes. And while I believe this resolution is a strong step forward, I would encourage the board to take it a step further. Let's mandate that families are notified clearly and directly about the need to secure firearms in their homes. We can communicate this through letters home to parents or at school activities where our parents are involved to keep schools and students free from gun violence. By passing this resolution and promoting secure storage as part of our safety culture, we can protect our children. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Melinda Rogers, then Pat Gesinski, and then Susan Lowesberg.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Melinda Rogers, and I am both a parent of two Virginia Beach City Public School children and a former VB CPS teacher. I'm here tonight to express my support for the resolution for the gun safe storage, or safe gun storage. Firearms are now the leading cause of death for children under the age of eighteen in the United States. In twenty twenty-two, data revealed that over four hundred twenty-three thousand federal firearm licenses were issued in Virginia, ranking it the third in the nation for such permits. In twenty twenty-one, more than half the gun-related deaths in this country, about fifty-four percent, were because of suicide. Additionally, there were two thousand seven hundred sixty firearm-related emergency department visits in this state just for twenty twenty-two. On average, three Virginians lose their lives to firearms each day, with male individuals ages fifteen to twenty-four bearing the highest burden of these injuries. While the school board may not control firearm licensing or carrying laws in Virginia, it does have the ability to play a crucial role in keeping firearms out of the hands of our students. This is precisely why I stand in strong support of the resolution on safe gun storage. It takes just a few moments to remind gun owners in our community, which is a Second Amendment sanctuary city, to store their firearms responsibly. Many gun owners already practice safe storage, but it just takes one single moment of carelessness for a child's life to be tragically cut short. Encouraging gun owners to securely store their firearms is not only prudent measure, but also a moral obligation in order to protect our children. While this initiative may seem modest, it does save, if it saves one life, one child, it is unquestionably worth supporting. While I have a minute left, I also wanted to say how imperative it is for students to feel safe inside their classrooms. As an educator, I know how important it is to address students' social emotional needs. And while some community members see social emotional support as unnecessary, I've specifically been trained to look at relationships within the classroom by the Department of Education. Study after study coming right from UVA has shown that children who do not have their social emotional needs met cannot learn. I'm sure you can imagine that when you're upset or worried as an adult, how difficult it is to concentrate on your work. It is absolutely impossible for a child whose brain is not fully developed to control their emotions, to concentrate on their work. This is why we have to support our students' social emotional learning. Thank you so much for your support, and please pass the safe gun storage.
Our next speaker is Pat Gesinski, and then Susan Lowesberg.
Good evening, Superintendent Robertson, Chairwoman Melnick, and members of the school board. Thank you to Mrs. Anderson for bringing the proposed resolution about safe storage of firearms for a vote tonight. The board's vote for adoption is a message that our school system makes it a priority to keep the students and staff at our schools safe. I spoke on the twenty-fourth and supported the resolution. I am one person among many others here tonight who asks that you will also share a vital message to our school families. This will come from you, Superintendent Robertson, and our school board, who are the trusted leadership in our community. You have the attention and platform to make a difference in the one hundred percent preventable deaths caused by children having access to unsecured firearms. I recall that most members at the last meeting agreed that they support the resolution about secure storage and that there was some discussion about what the school board responsibility was to our citizens at large and whether this could be a legal liability for our school system. I just learned some very good news this afternoon. Albemarle County Public Schools used their message board to send out their secure storage message, including our Be Smart program, to their entire community just this morning. They call it an important reminder. Their message is clear, and I urge you to take the same step with your ability to reach the guardians of our children. This afternoon, I sent an email asking you to consider information about the program that is readily available to you at no cost as our volunteer effort to remind and educate gun owners and non-gun owners alike to help save lives. It is called Be Smart for Kids. The message can be sent out to families by sharing a link to secure storage information and resources on the school's website, attached to communications to families, and shared at school forums and family informational events. Before COVID, we were partners in education and tabled with our Be Smart message at the Community Information Event sponsored by VB Schools. We would like to continue with those efforts, engaging in person again. So far in twenty twenty-four, there were at least a hundred and ninety-four unintentional shootings by children resulting in seventy-one deaths and a hundred and twenty-five injuries nationally. I ask you to take the steps necessary to save those children. Our public health crisis of gun violence is not going to be solved by one action, but when we send out the reminder that it is the responsibility of adults to protect our children and teens from harm by preventing their access to firearms, you will make a difference. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Susan Lowesberg.
Good evening. I was here last, two weeks ago, to speak on the issue of secure firearm storage. And tonight, I'm here to comment on some of the responses from school board members regarding that. So someone in the school board doubted data in the previously presented resolution, for example, that firearms are the leading cause of death for children seventeen, and teens seventeen and under in America. Data that is cited in the prestigious organizations such as the American Academy of Pediatrics, the New England Journal of Medicine, and the U.S. Center of Disease Control and Prevention. So you can split hairs, for example, that the CDC in their December twenty twenty-three morbidity and mortality report stated that firearms were the fourth leading cause of death for children under one years old, but were the cause of death for children and teens one through seventeen. So why are we splitting hairs? Every year, more than twenty-two thousand kids are shot and killed or injured by firearms. Secure firearms storage saves lives. I know because it saved the life of my nephew. Three years ago, a girl broke up with him, his first girlfriend. He was devastated. It was right, as kids were entering after COVID. He texted his girlfriend, who was in school at the time, and said, "I'm going to take my father's gun, and I'm going to kill myself." She had great courage. She contacted the principal, but they didn't make it up there in time for my nephew to grab that gun. And thank goodness, my brother-in-law practiced a secure storage. He was not able to access ammunition, and three years later, he is thriving. When not practiced, kids die, like the life of a boy my daughter knew at Princess Anne High School about six, seven years ago. He got access to his father's firearm, and he took his life. And it devastated the kids at the school. Like two students and two teachers who were gunned down by a fourteen-year-old who got access to an AR-15 in Georgia not too long ago. And I could go on and on. At last meeting, one of our school board members made a comment regarding secure storage. He said about firearm on a nightstand unloaded, that an unloaded gun is no better than a baseball bat. Yep, a member of our Virginia Beach School Board member has said that about responsible gun ownership. I know a lot of gun owners, and all of them found that statement highly concerning. From the CDC report regarding guns taken from nightstands, seventy-four percent of unsecured firearms that resulted in death in incidents of unintentional shootings were accessed from nightstands and other sleeping areas. So you can help. You can acknowledge that secure storage saves lives. You can amplify this message to parents on our VB schools system. And when occurrences of guns getting into schools, you can have a platform to educate. Locks on doors, metal detectors, cameras, they all have their place, but let's get to the root. Kids should not have access to firearms. You have a platform. Let's not split hairs. Let's do something. Thank you.
And that is time. And Madam Chair Speaker number eight is now present, so Elizabeth Shore, you're the next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Shore. I was a teacher with Virginia Beach Schools from twenty fifteen through this past spring when I had to leave my position due to a health condition. I just want to make a side note before I go into my primary comments this evening. For six of my eight years with Virginia Beach Schools, For six of my eight years with Virginia Beach Schools, I taught high school biology and AP environmental science, so was in the front lines of high-stakes testing. I understand firsthand the immense pressure on teachers to meet and exceed achievement goals and help their students succeed. For this reason, Dr. Robertson, I would like to thank you for your comments during the last board meeting, for standing up for the extraordinary teachers and staff of Virginia Beach Schools in recognition of their achievements, their ongoing professionalism, and commitment to their students. Thank you. I'm here this evening in support of the safe gun storage resolution. I am here to support my former students who are trying to learn and grow, and my former colleagues who are trying to do their job as education professionals under the ever-present fear and threat of gun violence to our students and in our schools. I watched the last board meeting live over Zoom and was frankly astonished by the position of some of the members of our board regarding the safe gun storage resolution. Ms. Brown, you first questioned whether the school board body even has jurisdiction for this resolution. Mr. Culpepper, you then also questioned jurisdiction, stating, and I quote, "This is not our business." I would ask you both, when you have a moment, to go to the VB CPS Board website for a refresher. Click on the face, family and community engagement icon, which is featured on your main page. And I quote again, "Vision: Aim to promote access to information and resources necessary to ensure academic success, as well as improve the social well-being of families and students." Mission: Engage and empower family and community stakeholders through division collaboration of resources, services, and information that leads to well-balanced and successful students. This body does not only have jurisdiction, but a duty to pass resolutions that will ensure the well-being of students, families, and communities of this division. Mr. Culpepper, you also noted that you are happy that moms' demand action was present at the last board meeting and that it was their role to promote gun safety. I agree, and they are here again and are continuing to do their job. Now it is time for you, Ms. Brown, and this board, to do yours and pass the safe gun storage resolution. Thank you.
We're going to move on to our online speaker, Stephen Strauss. Please unmute.
Hey, can you guys hear me clearly?
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Strauss.
All right, thank you. All right, this is to the Virginia Beach School Board. Thank you again for allowing me to speak. My name is Stephen Strauss. I am a descendant of Captain Adam Thurlgood and Sarah Offley. They're both my tenth great-grandparents, as mentioned in the last board meeting. I come before you today for the second time, again requesting and demanding that you remove my ancestor's name, Thurlgood, from Thurlgood Elementary School due to his association with enslavement. My tenth great-grandfather, Adam Thurlgood, was a Burgess Justice and member of the Virginia Council. Thus, he was involved with the DNA of colonial America, as was his father-in-law, Robert Offley, a Virginia Company stockholder. It's so much fun to talk about the strengths and positive attributes of this country's ancestors. However, we must acknowledge they have an Achilles' heel. One of his notable descendants comes from the Michael Thurlgood Cusis family, Daniel Park Cusis, who married Martha Dandridge. Their grandson and step-grandson, the first president, George Washington Park Cusis, is well-known in Arlington. But let us not forget their Achilles' heel or the enslaved that they owned. How do you think you would feel if the woman of color that Adam Thurlgood enslaved named Mary were alive today and saw that the school for education of children is named after the person that owned her? How do you think she would feel about that? Would she feel happy, like she's in a better America, or not? Thank you.
Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, item twelve on our agenda is information, and tonight we begin with Compass to Twenty Thirty Strategic Framework Work. And we welcome Dr. Lisa Baniki, Executive Director of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chairwoman Franklin, members of the school board, and Dr. Robertson. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you the proposed strategic framework for Virginia Beach City Public Schools, Compass to Twenty Thirty, Learning Today, Leading Tomorrow. This framework is the result of more than a year's worth of work on the part of many dedicated and knowledgeable individuals and was fully informed by input from literally thousands of stakeholders. Yeah, because it's not working. Okay. As a quick recap, before the meeting, she asked, I wanted her to click, and I said, "I'm going to click until I mess it up, and then you're going to click." But it's not working, so that's why. So give me just a moment. So Regina, will you please click for me? Thank you very much. As a quick recap, our strategic planning process has been ongoing since July, twenty twenty-three, when we first initiated conversations with the school board about the strategic planning process as part of your July retreat. And by September, we shared our proposal for the planning process, which went into full swing in October with community meetings and the creation of a public input page. In late fall is also when we conducted twenty focus groups involving over two hundred participants, representing a broad range of stakeholders, including parents. In early twenty twenty-four, we formed an ad hoc committee and launched a community-wide survey and developed draft goals for the framework. At your summer retreat, I gave an extensive overview of the work of the committee, sharing all the ways they had and would help shape the division's next strategic framework. The feedback we received from the school board informed the further refinement of the framework, and over the summer, several strategy sessions were conducted to revisit the division's graduate profile and further develop the strategic framework. In early September, we also invited ad hoc committee members back for a meeting to provide feedback on the framework, and it was also shared at the September meeting of the Compass Collaborative for the same purpose. And as a senior leadership team, we also identified key metrics for each goal area to guide our work. Based on these efforts, it is my privilege to present the draft of our next strategic framework, Compass to Twenty Thirty, Learning Today, Leading Tomorrow. The draft framework brings together several foundational items that represent who we are and what we are about as a division. The framework document includes our vision, mission, and core values. It also includes a revised version of our graduate profile. A few things to note about the graduate profile. First, it's no longer called a graduate profile. We have renamed it our future-ready profile. We work to streamline the attributes in the profile, and the inclusion of the attribute of lifelong learner more closely aligns with the division mission and is designed to include more of the life-ready skills that our community said were so critical as part of the input phase of the strategic planning process. Following the future-ready profile, for each goal, we have the equity emphases, strategies, and key metrics, which we are referring to as key navigational markers. We will also note that we have included definitions of key terms found in the document, and because we think it's important to give credit where it is due, we have an acknowledgements page to thank our community for their involvement and provide a special thank you to the hard work of the ad hoc committee. Now I will briefly review each of the five goals in the strategic framework. Our first goal is to challenge and support each student to excel and be future-ready. The equity emphasis is on inclusive teaching practices, ensuring every student has access to high-quality learning experiences that incorporate multiple perspectives. The strategies for goal one focus on implementing evidence-based, differentiated instruction across all classrooms to meet the diverse needs of our students, engaging in targeted outreach and education efforts to help stakeholders understand and make the most of the full range of division programs and services, providing comprehensive curriculums that equip students with essential skills in financial, digital, and media literacy, preparing them to navigate the complexity of our world, ensuring students have access to learning experiences that will equip them with the attributes in our future-ready profile, and enhancing career awareness and exploration so that students leave us ready to enroll in higher education, enlist in the military, or be employed in a meaningful career. Key navigational markers include tracking the percentage of students meeting grade-level reading and math benchmarks, enrolling in advanced courses, and having a solid plan post-graduation. We also have a marker strategically focused on students with disabilities, looking at the percentage that graduate on time with standard or advanced diplomas. Our second goal focuses on enhancing student well-being, resilience, and responsibility. The equity emphasis focuses on strengthening connections through mentorships, extracurricular activities, and leadership opportunities. The equity emphasis also includes monitoring multiple sources of data and addressing disparities. To address this goal, we are dedicated to creating a safe, inclusive learning environment that supports students' social emotional skills development, crucial for resilience and responsible leadership. We will amplify diverse student voices and provide opportunities for leadership across the division, helping students feel connected and valued. Our integrated systems of support will address the diverse needs of students, including mental health resources, and targeted interventions to ensure every student has the support they need. We will monitor progress through various metrics, including students' perceptions of safety, trusted adults, participation in activities and clubs, overall sense of belonging, as well as attendance. Our third goal is to value and invest in our staff, recognizing that a high-quality workforce is essential to student success. Our equity emphases for this goal include recruiting and retaining a diverse workforce reflective of our student population and ensuring staff have the skills necessary to support a diverse range of learners. Our strategies include providing a comprehensive support plan for provisionally licensed teachers, as well as developing and promoting pathways and pipelines to employment within VB CPS. We are expanding our professional learning opportunities with a focus on supporting non-exempt employees who play critical roles in our schools. Additionally, we're enhancing recognition programs and increasing access to resources that support staff, health, and well-being, creating a positive work environment where every employee feels valued. Our key markers will measure job satisfaction, perceptions of professional learning opportunities, awareness of health and wellness resources, teacher retention rate, and vacancy rate overall. Our fourth goal is to partner with families and the community to support students, recognizing that strong relationships between schools, families, and community partners are vital to student success. Our equity emphases focus on enhancing engagement by addressing barriers and fostering collaboration with community and business partners. Strategies include creating and maintaining open and accessible communication channels and providing resources and support to empower families to make informed decisions about their children's education. Resources and support include multilingual access to information, services, and opportunities, as well as offering a calendar of family engagement events throughout the school year to promote stronger relationships. We're also focused on creating mutually beneficial partnerships with local businesses and organizations to enhance real-world learning opportunities for our students, particularly those with disabilities. We will measure success through family awareness of engagement opportunities, satisfaction with involvement opportunities, as well as real-world learning experiences provided to our students and the percent of graduates participating in work-based or service-learning experiences. Our fifth goal is to advance organizational excellence by ensuring the effective, efficient, and equitable use of our resources. The equity emphasis for this goal involves implementing guiding principles for resource allocation and division operations. The strategies include creating an environment where everyone understands their role in maintaining both online and physical safety and security, identifying opportunities to automate tasks and improve division processes. By aligning our financial planning with best practices, we aim to create a transparent and accountable system that supports both students and staff. We will also focus on developing a strategic facilities management plan that prioritizes need, efficiency, and budget alignment. We're committed to sustainable practices that benefit the environment, our community, and our financial health. Key navigational markers, we're focused on meeting state accountability standards, accreditation, and stakeholder satisfaction with the resources available in their schools, as well as student and parent perceptions of students' educational experience and staff perceptions of workplace safety. Beginning tomorrow, actually, it started tonight, but beginning tomorrow, we will gather public comments through a dedicated feedback form on our website. We plan to present the strategic framework to the school board for information in November, which will include a summary of the public comments received and any modifications to the draft framework. Then we will follow up with it as an action item later in the month. We'll then facilitate strategy sessions with our offices and departments in the winter and early spring and roll out the plan to schools starting in April, twenty twenty-four, as part of the final citywide meetings of principals and assistant principals. Thank you for your time and engagement in this important work. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
It is important work, and it's a lot of work. And so we recognize that, and thank you. Ms. Anderson.
Do we have a typographical error?
Do we? It's on the PowerPoint. Yes. That's April, twenty twenty-five. Yes. I was like, it's on the framework. Okay. Yes. April, twenty twenty-five.
But overall, thank you for all that you've done, and I know that you've worked really hard on this, and the committee worked hard.
I had it on, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate all that you've done. And I know that the committee worked hard on this, and there was a lot of people involved in this, a lot of citizens across our city, not just one or two, like one of our speakers said tonight. There was a huge number of people. I mean, I mean, there were like thirty people, and some of, all of those people were citizens of Virginia Beach. So I can't say that we did. We just chose a few, but I appreciate everything that you did. Thank you.
And I'm proud of the work that the committee did and everyone who contributed to the development of the plan. It's a wonderful role to be a facilitator in the process, to hear those ideas come from the community and work with the committee members and peers to further out the plan.
One of our people on the committee said at one of the meetings, "Do other school divisions have this? Have strategic plans like this?" And I said, "Well, other school divisions have strategic plans, but they don't have a Lisa Baniki."
Thank you. So true, so true. Thank you, Dr. Baniki. Thank you very much. And now we welcome Crystal Page, our Chief Financial Officer, with our Budget Resolution Regarding Fiscal Year Twenty Three, Twenty Four Reversion and Revenue Sharing Formula Reconciliation. Welcome.
Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, school board members, and Dr. Robertson. This presentation is a summarization of our fiscal year-end twenty twenty-four unaudited reversion funds and the revenue-sharing formula reconciliation between the city and schools. This slide presents a breakdown of the school division's reversion funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. The first line shows approximately sixteen point four million dollars representing the school operating fund reversion. This excludes both the revenue variances for this fiscal year and debt service. As you can see, this reversion amount represents one point eight percent of the school division's approved operating budget. As noted in previous presentations, our goal is to have a reversion of approximately two percent of the operating budget by the end of each fiscal year. This strategy reflects a fiscally responsible and conservative approach to budget execution. In governmental budgeting, it is widely accepted not to spend every dollar of the budget. This approach ensures that funds remain available for unexpected costs, such as rising fuel prices, increase in utility expenditures, inflation, or unanticipated weather-related costs not fully covered by insurance, et cetera. The second line shows unexpended debt service of approximately five point three million dollars. As you know, the city issues any related debt for the school division. This unexpended amount is a result of not having a bond sale as originally planned, and therefore, the debt service to be paid was less than budgeted. Additionally, total revenue for fiscal year twenty twenty-four from all sources came in over budget, resulting in a total variance of approximately nine point seven million dollars. Our budget is based on projections from state, federal, and local sources. This additional revenue was not appropriated by the city, which means we were not authorized to spend the funds. We only request appropriations for additional funds when we are certain of receiving them, and this variance occurred because actual revenue exceeded projections. Breaking down the nine point seven million dollars further, we see that federal revenue came in over budget by about eight point seven million dollars, largely driven by impact aid and Medicaid reimbursements. As reported in the interim financial statements for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. As reported in the interim financial statements for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, at the school board meeting on September twenty-fourth, state revenue exceeded the budget by approximately three point three million. However, sales tax revenue was under budget by about four point nine million, which has an inverse relationship with basic aid. So based on our composite index, every decrease in sales tax increases basic aid by roughly sixty cents on the dollar. And then finally, our other revenue resources exceeded the budget by around two point six million. Lastly, the athletic fund had a reversion of approximately a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, and Green Run Collegian had a reversion of approximately forty-five thousand. Altogether, the unaudited total reversion for fiscal year twenty twenty-four amounts to thirty-one million, six hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. In the state of Virginia, unexpended local funds in any year shall remain part of the governing body's appropriation for use the next year. Virginia school divisions are not permitted to carry a fund balance. As you know, we have a revenue-sharing agreement with the city. The language in this first bullet comes directly from our city's school revenue-sharing policy. If by the end of the fiscal year, the actual non-dedicated local tax revenues differ from the budgeted amount, and if the excess is not required for the city's general fund balance reserve, the school board can request that these funds be re-appropriated. On the flip side, if the city's non-dedicated revenues fall short of projections, the school division must share in the reduction. For fiscal year twenty twenty-three twenty-four, city revenues from the seven revenue sources in the revenue-sharing formula fell short of the budgeted projections. As a result, the reconciliation of the revenue-sharing formula between the schools and city led to a reduction in revenue for the school division. This slide highlights the school division's reversion for twenty-three twenty-four, totaling the thirty-one million, six hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. Factoring in the city's revised revenue-sharing formula reconciliation, which resulted in a reduction of revenue of one million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, ninety-nine dollars, the unaudited total available for reappropriation is thirty million, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. As we have discussed before, it is important to remember that we intend to use these funds for one-time expenditures only. These funds should not be allocated to ongoing costs such as compensation. Our focus is to ensure that this money is invested in strategic, one-time initiatives that can have a lasting impact without creating future financial obligations. This slide outlines our proposed spending plan for the approximately thirty point five million available for reappropriation. Of the thirty million point five available, million available, five point three comes from unexpended debt service I previously mentioned, and which we will use as pay-go funding to replace previously authorized but unissued public revenue facility bonds. We plan to allocate one point five million for improvements to CSEP classrooms and playgrounds, and three point two million will be directed toward the payroll system replacement project, which will ensure we have significant amounts set aside for this project over the coming years. Additionally, ten point five million, which was presented in the CIP-approved budget, will be allocated from reversion. The city will transfer this to our school reserve special revenue fund for use in the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six CIP. And lastly, ten million dollars will be allocated to the health fund. As mentioned during the school board retreat, we are seeing a higher claims trend compared to previous years. The eight point five million we directed into the health fund to lower employee premiums has contributed to a faster depletion of the fund balance than anticipated due to the higher claims trend. This allocation will help stabilize the fund. And looking ahead to fiscal year twenty twenty-six and beyond, we may need to consider increases in employee and employer premiums to balance rising healthcare costs and maintain a healthy fund balance. The final slide outlines our next steps. The budget, budget resolution regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-three twenty-four reversion and revenue-sharing formula reconciliation will be before you for action on, on October twenty-second. Following that, the approved resolution will be presented to City Council on November twelfth, along with a public hearing regarding this request on the same day or the same evening. City Council is scheduled to take action on November nineteenth. As the board continues to review and discuss the recommendations, we will revise the resolution before bringing it back to you for approval. We ask that any additional recommendations be submitted as soon as possible to ensure we can incorporate any changes and finalize the resolution. And that concludes the presentation. I will open it up for any questions or discussion.
Okay, Ms. Franklin?
So I wanted to just ask a question. It's not necessarily, so again, great job as always, making sure that we have some additional funds left over. I wanted to just ask you though, because I heard in a forum that one of the candidates running for school board had, had mentioned that we are able to take money from the construction fund to accommodate compensation for employees. And I think, yes, it was, it was actually put out there. And so one thing that I wanted, I think it's very important to ensure that we are putting out the proper information so that the public is not confused about that. So if, if you could just explain, first of all, why reversion funds can only be used for one time? I mean, it makes sense to all of us sitting on the dais, but just for the public to understand why we can only use these for, for one-time expenses, okay? And then also just explain why the, we cannot just take construction money to compensate our, our employees. Thank you.
With regards to reversion, so reversion in a simplistic form is really just actual coming in less than budget. So we just have, it's already been appropriated, and so we have, by law, we are able to ask for reappropriation. That's not guaranteed every year. We try to stay within that two percent. To give you context, the city stays within ten to twelve percent of their budget. So we try to stay within two to make sure that when we get close to fiscal year end, we don't have any surprises or any issues as we're booking anything that's coming in. We have, from an accounting standpoint, you have to do accruals, and you have payroll that's on a two-week lag, and you have leave payouts, and there's all kinds of expenditures that we estimate, but you have to be sure that you've got the funding to keep that. So we don't ever bank on that reversion money to ever stay that, that amount if something were to happen. So we look at it as one time because it could be different from year to year. I hope that answers that question. With regards to the construction, without knowing the context of the comment, the only thing I can say is in the budget development process, certainly there would be a process in which you could reduce the amount that you put towards your CIP program in order to put it in your operating budget, which might be something you could use for compensation ongoing, but it would also be tough on the construction in progress, in program. So I don't know that I've ever seen where you would actually take any money that's already been approved in a CIP budget and actually ask for that to be transferred to the operating budget in order that to be used for compensation.
And I, thank you, and I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware that that, that is not customary for us to do that because, again, that's money that we need for not just reconstruction, but maintenance and other work that we do. So thank you very much.
Ms. Brown?
Thank you. I appreciate all of your work on this, and I had a couple of questions. The first one is related to the health insurance fund. I just wanted to kind of clear something up because the speaker previously had said that our employees can anticipate this January that their health insurance premiums are going to skyrocket. And I am not under the impression that that's the case. And so I just wanted you to, you know, clear the air that that's the next budget cycle that we really need to have those conversations about how we're going to proceed, correct?
Absolutely. The timeframe, the window to actually change employee rates at this point for one-one twenty twenty-five is not going to happen. We've already had rates set. It's open enrollment right now, finishing up, so that is not going to happen. So that, we are looking at that for one-one twenty twenty-six. It doesn't preclude us on seven-one twenty twenty-five if we are so inclined and able to do increase, increase the employer premium. But we are, we'll only be looking at employee increases if needed on January first, twenty twenty-six.
Okay. And, and I, I kind of already knew that that was the case, but I just wanted to say that, you know, for our staff that's watching and that may have been concerned about that, the rates that you're seeing when you're signing up in open enrollment are your rates. So I just wanted to make sure they knew that. The other question was, is, you mentioned that we tried to, you know, plan for two percent for reversion to be, you know, fiscally conservative, and I appreciate that explanation, but it's more of a comment than a question, but I would hope, since we know that we're trying to plan for that, that maybe as a board, when we're getting into those budget discussions in February, that maybe we have some conversations about what we might like to see some of those funds go to as a, as a board. If there are reversion funds available, and obviously CIP is definitely one of the, the needs. And not that I have an issue with what, what is presented, but I, I do think when it comes to, you know, thirty-one million dollars, that we should have some conversations about that in budget cycle. Thank you.
Mr. Culpepper?
Hey, the, thank you for that, by the way. Good detail. The, the line I hear about unexpended debt service, did you say that that was principal and interest for bonds that were not issued, is that right?
Right, that's correct. We, because really we're, we're not having any. The way the city does it is that they, if their cash flow is sufficient to fund any of the projects that are ongoing, then they don't necessarily need, feel the need to issue bonds. So while, while in private, you probably issue bonds and then do a project, but because the city has cash, they can actually just reimburse themselves by issuing bonds. And so they just didn't need to do a bond sale because their cash reserves were sufficient.
Brings up an interesting question to me. Is, is, is it our debt, our debt, or is it the city's debt that we are responsible for?
So we are not permitted to show that debt on our books from an accounting standpoint when we record it. We do some calculation that kind of offsets the city's debt with our assets, and it's in our ACFOR. So, yeah, it, yeah, we tried to show it one time and it was bad.
Let me answer my next question. What is our debt?
Oh, I'd have to look and see. We, we, it's, I wouldn't even say off the top of my head. So we get a calculation from the city budget staff, and then, of course, they set our debt service based on that debt at fifty million. And this last couple of years, of course, we haven't been issuing that. So we can get you a final figure, because it's constantly changing as we make principal and interest payments.
I'm just curious, kind of, kind of a rough number.
We'll, we'll get that for you.
The reason I was asking all that, though, is I'm curious if whether this money that we budgeted for debt could go after principal. Is that a possibility, and would it, would it pay benefit in the future if we did that?
You mean like go towards a principal payment on, on an existing debt? That's kind of what it's doing. It's actually saying they've already authorized bonds, and so it's really putting cash into our, so we don't have that reliance on debt in the future.
So for those of us that have been on the board for a little while, this, this spending plan looks a little different than years past when we would have whiteboards and school bus replacements. So happy to see, as Mrs. Brown said, that ten million dollars going towards CIP is so important. How are we with our bus replacements?
So I'm going to probably defer. We did have, we did not replace budgets for this fiscal year when the budget was, was created. I don't know, but we know that replacement cycle is important. And so we will see where we are, but we do have a replacement cycle.
Yeah, we do.
We do, and as we briefed you during the budget season, so we didn't buy any regular education school buses for this year because of the constraints related to the operating budget. In any one year, you can take that hit. It's when you string them back to back.
Right. At about a hundred apiece, a hundred thousand apiece, the buses.
They've gone up from that price now.
Yay, okay.
And just to go back to Mr. Culpepper's question, that debt service amount that's on all the slides that we've been showing you, that has the debt service when we said, hey, here's the debt service related to if we did Prince County High School, that, all that information is on that slide, and it shows roughly about forty-five million dollars what our current debt service is. And so that's the five million dollars that you're seeing that's the excess.
Okay, so that number, so the words debt service equate to debt? I didn't think so.
The payments that go to.
That's why I'm asking, what is the debt?
I'll just share one before she sits down. We have had this conversation with the city manager and his team. So they're well aware of where we are. And they also strongly encourage us to use reversion funds towards the CIP.
Okay, thank you. Item fourteen, the consent agenda. So at this time, I will read the items included on the consent agenda. And after reading those items, I will ask for any objections or requests to move the item to another portion of the agenda if so required. So tonight, we have five policy review recommendations. Policy five dash six one, first aid, emergency care. Policy, policy six dash thirty, family life education. Policy six dash four seven, interscholastic competition. Policy six dash five five, resources for parental home instructional assistance. And policy five dash six seven one, class rank, weighted bonus credit, dual enrollment. And item B is religious exemption. Does anybody need me to move any of these consent items?
So I, I would like you to move class rank, policy six dash seventy-one, so that we can have, not, not that I'm against it, I just would like to have a little discussion about it.
Okay.
Move it to action. I'm sorry, I should have said something earlier.
That's okay.
If anyone has any objection.
All right. Anybody have an objection to that? All right, then we will move policy six dash seven one, class rank.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just a question to clarify, if, if someone objects to an item in the consent agenda, it's not a vote, it just goes to action, correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So we will move that to what'd we say, fifteen E? Fifteen E.
I'm sorry, I should have said something earlier.
That's okay. All right, then I will entertain a motion to oh, it's on the board, yes, but I have to say it. I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented minus policy six dash seven one. Motion made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Kendrick. All right, the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes for the approval of the consent agenda as presented and amended. So the motion did pass.
Thank you. All right, on to fifteen, action. I call for a motion to approve the October eighth, twenty twenty-four personnel report and administrative appointments. Motion made by Ms. Owens, seconded by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Okay, the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes. The motion did pass for the personnel report for October eighth, along with the administrative appointment.
Thank you, and Dr. Robertson?
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we have one administrative appointment, and that's Samantha Phillips, currently an admin assistant. And actually, she was waiting to be placed in the admin assistant role because we were waiting for someone to fill her position in her current location as a school improvement specialist. We've done that now in another position to open up, so we're actually going to make her the next assistant principal at Lynn Haven Middle School.
That's wonderful.
And that's it, thank you.
Well, we look forward to meeting her at the next meeting. Okay, item B, new construction guidance and direction. I'll entertain a motion to open the discussion for new construction guidance and direction. Motion made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Owens. All right, discussion, which this has. Mrs. Lanetti gave everybody some potential motions. You can pick and choose, you can merge. But first, we welcome Mr. Freeman, our chief operating officer. Do you have anything that you would like to?
Do, we have a couple of slides. We put some slides in here to ensure that we had an opportunity for clarification prior to tonight's vote. So we began this process to receive clear direction for which school to prioritize in the upcoming budget cycle as we developed our proposed capital program. That conversation led to two other outcomes. One was a recommendation. That conversation led to two other outcomes. One was a recommendation to move Bayside six students out of the Aragona property and back into Bayside Middle School. The other outcome was the desire to reduce the number of transitions for the tri-campus students and to vacate the Williams property. Here's staff's recommendations. Bayside six, so this was listed first because chronologically it can happen sooner than the other two and it can be inde- uh executed independently of the other two decisions. Not that you need to vote on it in that order, um, but that's why it shows up first. The next recommendation is for the Prince Anne High School replacement project to be the priority project. If approved, we would develop a proposed capital program aligned with this direction, including debt service and funding to support it. We project this bid, uh, this two bid in twenty twenty six with an estimated move in during school year thirty one, thirty two. The final recommendation is for the board to direct staff to evaluate and recommend a preferred plan for the tri-campus. This plan should minimize the number of transitions and vacate the Williams property. We would investigate the plan in twenty four, twenty five. If wings needed to be added, we could bid it in twenty twenty six for a potential move in during the school year twenty eight, twenty nine. So that's a little background on the boat. So let's be specific about what's not being voted on tonight. You're not voting on anything related to the design or educational specifications for Prince Anne High School. That will occur at another meeting prior to putting it out for design. For the tri-campus, you're not voting on anything related to what the tri-campus may look like in the future. You're not voting on a bi-campus model, you're not voting on a K-five model, you're not voting to add wings at Newtown and Diamond Springs. You are directing staff to evaluate all those things and return to you with a recommendation. So we just wanted to give you a little bit of background and then open it up and we're obviously available. I'm available to answer questions. I know Ms. Lynetti has some things as well.
Okay, so based on the staff recommendation, I'm just gonna piece that together and then turn it over for you to discuss. So base uh basically, a motion would be that the school board schedule a public hearing and subsequent vote in accordance with applicable law regarding moving the Bayside sixth grade campus students into Bayside Middle School in school year twenty five, twenty six, and authorizing the superintendent to determine the appropriate timeframe for this move and to take all other necessary actions related to this move. That the school board approves CIP one dash zero one five Princess Anne High School replacement project to be the next priority replacement school within the CIP. And that the school board directs the superintendent and staff to evaluate and recommend to the school board a preferred plan for the tri-campus model that reduces the number of transitions for students and moves students enrolled in the tri-campus school. So I open that all to the board now for discussion.
Did you make a motion?
No, I just gave a potential motion by merging three of the, what what Mr. Freeman presented. Um, and then I pieced together some of the motions that Kami offered us and just put them together.
My suggestion might be, why don't you just do a motion to open discussion all all?
We already have that.
You've got, as long as that's clear, then I think you're okay in the rest of the motions.
Okay, so Ms. Brown.
Okay, bear with me, you know, I always have a lot of questions about this topic. I just love it so much. Um, okay, so the Bayside six, um, so I am looking at the motion here and it says in authorizing the superintendent to determine the appropriate timeframe for this move. Um, and based on what I'm seeing here, the timeframe would be twenty five, twenty six, correct? I mean, wouldn't it make sense we'd start at the beginning of the year?
Well, the request is to expedite this and what we shared with you is if the board were to direct us quickly, we think we could get it done as soon as next school year.
Okay, so we're not a hundred percent sure we can get it done by next school year. Is that why it says?
If we leave here tonight, I am very confident that we can get it done by next year.
Okay. Is that, I just don't love punting the the timeline on that motion. Um, I'm fine with all the rest of it. Um, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, um, so the second one, Princess Anne uh High School, I already caught that this isn't for rightsizing, so there will be an additional vote on the design portion um from getting from thirty percent to a hundred, correct?
Yeah, so remember back in the June timeframe, we came and we presented Prince Anne High School and there was a request to make modifications. We came back to you with those. We didn't put the school board in a position to be able to respond to that. By the time the school board seemed to be, um, there wasn't a whole lot of feedback that was, that that was not on target. So in order to be able to go out for design, we would need a final approval on the educational specifications to be able to put that out for design. So that would require an additional approval to be able to do that. When I say additional, this doesn't even address educational specifications. This just says, is Prince Anne High School gonna be first or is it gonna be second? Or is Betty F. Williams and Bayside six gonna be first and Prince Anne gonna be second?
Okay. Um, my next question is, um, and it it may have just been a um slip up, but I know that it's a process that can be used sometimes. A couple of times I heard design um build instead of design bid build. Um, this doesn't designate that we're going to do design build instead of design bid build, right? I just wanna make sure. Okay, all right. Um, and then um for the third one, for the the tri-campus, um, it it would be nice if there was um some sort of uh timeline that this recommendation would come back to us in this motion so that we can uh make sure that it's happening as quick as possible. And so those are my thoughts. Is this just open ended?
I would say that, I mean, what we try to do, if you look at uh Mr. Freeman's slide for the tri-campus, with approval this evening, we can investigate the plan engaging with the tri-campus community uh in the twenty four, twenty five school year, which we're in right now. Primarily, we're talking about in the spring next year. So in the spring next year and the fall next year, we should be able to come to this board multiple times and say, here was the consensus of the community in terms of whether or not we want to, whatever the configuration is, K-two and three five or two K-fives and what that would look like, and then that would be built into the CIP to follow in twenty six, twenty seven.
Okay, thank you. So can we write that in there in the motion or?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
You good?
So how would the motion read?
Well, just a second. Let's let's get through um Mr. uh, Ms. Franklin first and then Ms. Manning.
Okay, and so along with what Ms. Brown had asked, um, it, talking about the Bayside six campus, um, the way that the emotion, and I I understand that's just a proposed motion, but it says that that I moved that the school board will schedule a public hearing and subsequent vote, but you're kind of making it feel like we could only get it done by twenty five, twenty six if we start the wheels in motion tonight. Um, and I guess does, how do we do that with the motion being a um public hearing and subsequent vote?
I'll take that one. Uh, there is a concern, there is a statute, you have twenty two eight one seventy nine with three that talks about when you have, if you have a school that has a certain percentage, when you redistrict or you consolidate schools, depending on the percentage and the amount of it, students moving, you actually have to have a public hearing before there's a vote. So I just wanna put that in to be careful. I think we're probably gonna meet the requirement because you would have a hundred percent of the students leaving this campus going to that or consolidating it. So that's why, and I threw that in there to be careful. I think it qualifies as a school for VDOE. That's only my concern, isn't whether, I don't think it's a center. So because it qualifies as a school, I think the statute applies. So we do have to have a public hearing somewhere along the line before you vote formally to do this. We need to move. You can start working this direction on there, but I think we're gonna have to have that public.
Well, with that being said, can we even move forward discussing that without the public hearing first? Can we vote on something to move it forward without?
Yeah, that's a great question because that has never been talked about and we've talked about Plan C a number of times.
Correct, and when I looked at it today, um, I thought, you know, the statute might apply, and so I threw that into the motion. Um, I wanna make sure we're covered on this. So we, uh, we can put it off instead of, we would have to have a public hearing ten days before, a public hearing's gotta happen before you can vote formally on what to do with this.
All right, so what you're saying is this conversation is moot at this point.
For the sixth grade.
Well, it, which, if you want, what you have to say is we want, we wanna go forward with this, so go ahead and schedule a public hearing because this is not, that's what you have to get.
I just wanna clarify that. I don't wanna.
Well, I I know, but I wanna clarify that I'm not agreeing to the moving forward. Um, I'm agreeing to moving forward to have a public hearing.
Correct.
Right, okay, that's why I just wanna, I.
Well, well, the way, right, it is, you know, subsequent vote in accordance with applicable law regarding moving Bayside sixth grade students into Bayside Middle School in S Y twenty five, twenty six and authorizing to to an appropriate timeframe for this movement, take all necessary actions related to this move. So that's, that's what you're putting in front of the public hearing is that we were proposing to do this.
Okay, all right. And I just wanna clarify. And then, um, you know, I, and again, I, Mr. Freeman, you and your team do an amazing job. I just really kind of was expecting, um, you know, we, I know that we kind of had these recommendations, but I really was expecting to hear more about what we're gonna do about Betty F. Williams. Um, you know, in terms of having some action and guidance there, so, um, so. Right, um, but, okay, so if the vote tonight, I I just, you know, I just wanna publicly say if the vote tonight is just to move forward with Princess Anne without having a clear um plan for what we're doing with Betty F., um, I probably will not support that. Just, but I appreciate your efforts on that.
So if I can just address that for a second. Our current adopted capital program already addresses what we're dealing with, Betty F. Williams and Bayside six. So we need to adjust. We need direction to shift from what the school board has approved as the path forward. So the concept of transitioning from the tri-campus model came up in August. And we're adjusting. This is not something gets turned around in weeks or months. This is gonna take a very long time and that's why we say for calendar year twenty four, twenty five, that would be what the school board is directing staff to get that accomplished, which includes public comment, all the things that go with it. So it's not a quick timeline. It's not something that can be uh accomplished in advance. You remember, this all started because we need to know which one is the priority school.
Right or left, yes.
And there were concerns that were generated out of that. Can I have the slides back? Can you go to the flow chart? I can't get there. So the most basic step was at the top. We need to know, are we prioritizing Prince Anne High School and designing a capital program around that to propose to the school board for this coming school year? Or are we doing that with Betty F. Williams or Bayside six or some version of that? That's the most basic thing that we've uh been doing.
I understand.
And we are also trying to now accomplish simultaneously Bayside six, which is relatively easier to accomplish just because of the nature of that. But the tri-campus model is gonna take a lot more work. That's gonna take a lot of feedback from a lot of different experts um to be able to provide that. So that's why that cannot occur in that period of time. It's gonna take the staff time. That's why we're asking the school board to direct us to do that work and it requires us, there's a commitment that we have to come back to you and report, here's what the recommendation is, so that you can then provide updated guidance or approve what the recommendation is.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Ms. Manning.
Yeah, I have a similar question of regarding the public hearing requirement. I wasn't uh familiar with that. I know we need public hearings when we have rezoning. Um, but I don't believe that when we moved the students, for example, from O D C on Independence Boulevard over to a new building off of Independence, I don't know that we necessarily had a specific public hearing for that. Where is the statute that governs this topic?
Hold on a second, Ms. Manning, I'll locate it for you.
Okay, and then while you're doing that, just another comment, if I may make a suggestion um that when we make a motion, that perhaps we combine all of the motions together that Kami has given us so that we're kinda directing on all three topics at the same time. Princess Anne High School, moving Bayside six, and also addressing the tri-campus situation.
Yes, that's what I did, Mrs. Manning.
Okay.
Ms. Manning, it's twenty two point one seventy nine subsection eight, which would read obtain public comment, there are public hearing not less than seven days after reasonable notice the public in a newspaper of dental circulation, the school division, prior to providing, one, the consolidation of schools, two, the transfer for the public school system of the administration, all structural personnel of any public class, school class or non-structural to a private entity, or three, in school divisions having fifteen thousand pupils or more in average daily membership for redistricting of school boundaries or adopting any pupil assignment plan affecting the assignment of fifteen percent more of the students in the average daily membership in the affected school. Because I talked about the requirements of the hearings.
Okay, so this would probably be the consolidation of the school part, the first one?
Yeah, or pupil assignment, I think, plan because now it's, you would be assigning them to the middle school and obviously a hundred percent of the kids at the sixth grade campus, if it qualifies as a school, that's more than fifteen percent. So I think to be careful, we need to make sure we've done that hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I, I'm glad that uh Ms. Lynetti added the public hearing part in. Even if it wasn't in the statute, I think it's appropriate, given the uh, you know, amount of uh families and students and neighborhoods uh affected. Uh, I would like to uh see the motion uh move forward with, as Ms. Manning said, those three pieces together, but uh if we could, in the motion concerning the tri-campus plan, and this kind of feeds off of uh Ms. Brown's comment as well, uh, add after the, well, pull the period and uh maybe put a comma, starting with public hearings in twenty four, twenty five. That way, it gives some indication to the public that our intention is to start this process this school year, although we can't give a definite honor when the uh project ends. So, that's it, thank you.
But Ms. Lynetti, and with that, we got an email from someone in District Four who said, would that take place in District Four? Would anything happen in District Four for the public hearing or would that be here at a school board meeting?
Because it's before a school board vote, I I think you're gonna have to have it here in front of the school board.
Okay. All right, Ms. Anderson.
I just wanna remind, I just wanna remind everyone um that the reason, one of the, one of the reasons that this came up that we decided to change this and possibly move the sixth graders from uh the old Aragona building, when I say old, I mean old, is that we are, it it is incumbent upon us to get those kids out of that building as soon as possible. And this is the fastest way to get them out of that old Aragona building um and into a a facility that uh is of higher standard. So I I feel like, you know, we need, this is, and also this plan, if we go forward with it by moving these sixth graders as quickly as possible to um the middle school, also then allows us the um, the idea of possibly combining um all the students from Betty F. into the other two schools and it would give us less of a transition. And I like the idea of those students not having as many transitions. And so I think we need to make sure that the public is aware that we're trying to do this for the benefit of the students. They'll have less transition and then they're gonna be, they're out of Aragona, the old Aragona building as fast as possible um and into a situation where they're in a um a building that we can all be proud of.
Thank you. Ms. Brown.
I am initially had put myself in line because of the public comment thing. Um, if we're gonna have it um down here at the school admin building, um, I, can they still comment online? Absolutely, they can comment any manner you suggest. You could do public hearings, additional public hearings in the district, but the same day you do a vote here, I would think you, you, standardly, you would have a vote a public hearing here before the school board during a regular meeting, not that it would prevent you from having anything else. Okay, and we just got an email back. Um, you know, and I I guess the concern was that we could all just move down there, but we can't broad, we don't have the capabilities to broadcast at Bayside High School, correct? And I can't remember every, every, you could go just have a special meeting and do a public hearing there. And I can't remember, I was every time, you could go just have a special meeting and do a public hearing there, um, uh, in the district, on this one. Um, I, I'm not crazy about the idea of just voting there, but you could do the voting there, but again, the public hearing has to be seven days before the vote. So you could just have a special meeting, have a hearing in that district for the purpose of having a public meeting, and then come back on your regularly scheduled school board day and vote for that. You could also vote there, but I, I think the, because the vote affects the entire school division, the entire city, you don't want to give the perception that it's just the certain district that's voting on it. But if it's easier for you, that would be one way to do it, I would just take a little coordination on our part to do that. But again, when you do a public hearing out there, because it's a school board meeting, you're gonna have to broadcast, and we're gonna have to have all the accommodation. So that, that would take us some work to do.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to take a moment really quickly, um, you know, to thank Ms. Kendrick for her advocacy for, um, Williams and Bayside Six and all of her work there. Um, I really appreciate, um, that we took the time to come up with, you know, a potential option C that looks like it will likely work out, um, and it will reduce the transitions for the students in that area and provide them with a, a newer learning environment as well. Um, I, I definitely think that this was a, a really good idea, I know that there is, you know, quite a few people that had the idea, but um, Ms. Kendrick really did a lot of work, um, out in the community advocating for this, and so I do appreciate that. Right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weems.
Um, yes, I would like to definitely propose that we have, um, a public hearing in that district at a squ- at one of those schools, not to vote, so I don't know what we can call it, if you actually call it a public hearing or just a special meeting, but have that in advance, and then also the night of the vote, vote to have it here. I think it's so important for us to go out in that community and meet in the schools so that they can actually attend and, and it'd be a lot more convenient there, so, so I propose that we, you know, as quickly as possible, set a date and, and make sure that we do that.
Okay, and so the public knows and my colleagues know that when I start to get hundreds of emails about a topic, um, I do use the same response so that constituents know, um, that A, no favoritism towards anything that is sent to me, but B, so that each constituent knows that their email was received, it was read and responded to. I sometimes get a little kickback on that, but that is why, especially when there are hundreds. And so I do read everyone, and so everyone will get the same response, and so, um, I look forward to movement with, um, a special meeting in District Four, um, to hear from the community, and, um, now, is the board ready for me to piecemeal a motion? And, um, is everybody okay with Mrs. Owens', um, addition of after, in the tri-campus schools, comma, starting with public hearings in twenty-four, twenty-five? Does anybody object to that piece? Um, so, right where it says additional motion, tri-campus plan, at the very end where it says enrolled in the tri-campus schools, starting with public hearings in twenty-four, twenty-five?
It's, you wanted it, it, is it school year twenty-four, twenty-five? I don't, I'm not sure they'll get back to before, or is it in year twenty-five?
I, I think the language that she's using is that we would have the public feedback, and, so it doesn't matter, can, that can definitely happen once twenty-four, twenty-five, school year.
So, school year, then, Miss, now, like, you may have to correct mine for, just to make sure you're saying twenty-four, twenty-five, and that, I think I'm, okay, okay.
Okay, oh, Ms. Kendrick, hello, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, as you know, I don't have a voice, but I just wanna thank you all for your support in this initiative for Betty F. Williams, um, every one of you, and Superintendent, and Mr. Freeman, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kendrick, okay, so here we go. And I have it in writing for you, too. Oh, you know what, while she's doing that, actually, this motion starts with I move that the school board schedule a public hearing and subsequent vote. Oh, so I don't have to add that to the very end, okay. Oh, would you like it there, subsequent vote? Beginning.
I think our, yeah, our intent was that you would make a decision on the C I P project, cause that, that's the first one.
I see that, okay. Alright, are you ready? Nothing, we're just gonna keep, I'm putting our thing together. Are you ready, Ms. Tonyato? And I have it in writing for after if you need it. I move that the school board schedule a public hearing and subsequent vote in accordance with applicable law regarding moving the Bayside sixth grade students into Bayside Middle School in school year twenty-five, twenty-six, and authorizing the superintendent to determine the appropriate timeframe for this move, and to take all other necessary actions related to this move. In addition, that the school board approves C I P one dash zero one five, Princess Anne High School Replacement Project to be the next priority replacement school within the C I P, and that the s- school board directs the superintendent and staff to evaluate and recommend to the school board a preferred plan for the tri-campus model that reduces the number of transitions for students, and move students enrolled in the tri-campus schools starting with public hearings in twenty-four, twenty-five. Was that slow enough? Okay, school year twenty-four, twenty-five. So that original motion was to open for discussion, should, I need another motion for for this, or?
You can be the mover, and somebody can second that if they're comfortable with that.
Thank you, alright, so I, I made the motion and Ms. Owens seconded, alright, any further discussion on this? The whole thing, okay, do you know I need to do it slowly, or you're just verifying? Okay, I move that the school board schedule a public hearing and subsequent vote in accordance with applicable law regarding moving the Bayside sixth grade students into Bayside Middle School in school year twenty-five, twenty-six, and authorizing the superintendent to determine the appropriate timeframe for this move, and to take all other necessary actions related to this move. In addition, that the school bo- that the school board approve C I P one dash zero one five, Princess Anne High School Replacement Project to be the next priority replacement school within the C I P, and that the school board directs the superintendent and staff to evaluate and recommend to the school board a preferred plan for the tri-campus model that reduces the number of transition for students. Or take, strike, strike that, take out and move students, leave it at the tri-campus model that reduces the number of transition for students enrolled in the tri-campus schools starting with public hearings in school year twenty-four, twenty-five. Okay, are you guys all okay with that? Okay, so I made the motion and it was seconded by Ms. Owens, alright, any further discussion? That was great work, alright, the voting board is open. It's not open yet. That was great work, everyone, thank you. I think Mr. Freeman's gonna go home and jump on his bed tonight.
Ms. Kendrick, the voting board isn't open yet, just hold on a second.
So the public knows we're just, there it is. Thank you, Ms. Tonyato, okay, so the public can see the motion. Good job, that's, that was impressive. And Ms. Owens. The voting board is open. And Ms. Manning, how do you vote? So, Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes, the motion did pass for that substitute motion for the C I P. You now have direction, great, congratulations. Okay, um, resolution for gun, s- uh, safe gun storage, I call for a motion to approve the safe gun storage resolution. Motion made by Mr. Callen, seconded by Ms. Owens, Ms. Anderson, can you please read the resolution before we have any discussion?
Whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools is committed to educating and supporting the children of Virginia Beach in a safe community and safe schools, and whereas research shows that almost every day a child accesses a gun and unintentionally kills or injures themselves or someone else in the United States. And whereas the school board of the City of Virginia Beach recognizes and mourns the multiple lives of the students who have been, who have been lost to gun violence and firearm injuries over the past few years, and strives to prevent the senseless loss of additional young lives to firearm-related deaths. And whereas research shows that one of the best ways to protect children from accessing firearms is making sure all guns are securely stored, and whereas steps can be taken by gun owners and non-gun o- gun owners alike to make sure kids cannot access ga- a gun and put themselves and others in danger. And whereas when guns are not properly stored, tragedy can strike, whether it is a child finding a firearm and injuring or killing themself, or someone else, or someone stealing it and using it to commit crime in our communities. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools is educating the public on the crucial role of reducing injuries and deaths by promoting secure gun storage and safety, so that children can live in a safe community and attend school in a safe environment. Now, therefore be it resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens of Virginia Beach to support secure gun storage and safety, and be it further resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens of Virginia Beach to practice gun, safe gun storage and gun safety for the well-being of all adults and children in the City of Virginia Beach, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board adopted by the school board of the City of Virginia Beach this eighth day of October twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, so it's now open for discussion. Uh, Ms. Anderson.
I'd like to say that I wrote this resolution because I feel strongly that responsible gun ownership is something that I hope that this resolution will highlight in the homes of our students. More than half of all US gun owners store firearms unlocked in our country. So responsible gun ownership is not only about how, where, and when a person uses their firearm, it's also about how they store it when not in use. If a person has guns in their home, it's important to always practice safe and secure firearm stor- storage when not in use, and I encourage all listeners who are, who, who own guns in this, in our city to please Google safe firearm storage or safe gun storage and find ways to secure your guns safely in your home, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, uh, Ms. Manning.
Thank you, um, so I agree with and absolutely support responsible gun ownership, and I take gun safety very seriously and have my entire life, um, having grown up around guns, um, my entire life. Um, I appreciate some of the changes that have been made from the prior resolution, and I agree with much of it. However, there are a couple of statements that I believe that are still inaccurate, and there's one phrase in particular that I believe is very politically charged, and I had requested that to be removed, but it's still in there. Um, the phrase gun violence is used by groups who want to restrict the Second Amendment. And in fact, one of the speakers this evening advocating for this resolution is on camera at a forum booing the Second Amendment. Regarding the term gun violence, when someone's killed in a DUI crash, we don't say it was car violence or alcohol violence. When someone's killed with a knife, we don't say that it was knife violence, it's people who are violent, not objects. So while I do personally advocate for people to be responsible gun owners, and I taught my own sons how to properly use and store weapons, I can't support the resolution as it's written for the reasons stated, thank you.
Mr. Culpepper.
Thank you. To be clear, I don't have any objection at all, uh, to teaching firearm safety, quite the opposite in fact. But I haven't changed my view that this is not appropriate for Virginia Beach Public Schools to attempt to dictate the conditions that constitute safe storage of privately owned arms. It is perfectly appropriate for groups like Moms Demand Action, Virginia Citizens Defense League, or the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources, or the Boy Scouts even, to make their best arguments and advocate to the public their best practices. Gun safety also includes these rules, treat every weapon as if it is loaded, never point a gun at something you don't intend to shoot, keep your finger off the trigger until you're ready to shoot, and perhaps most importantly, thou shalt not kill, or do it, do to others what you would have them do to you, pick your favorite. I used to say all the time as a commander that safety is not a mission in and of itself, safety is a byproduct of good training. Guns are tools, like many other tools, they're dangerous when mis- misused, either by intent or by ignorance. Using these tools in an unsafe manner is the result of poor, no training, insufficient supervision, especially with respect to youth, or lack of discipline, which I find to be related to poor training. To use them as a weapon, on the other hand, is a choice, just it, just as it would be for a kitchen knife, or a screwdriver, or a rock, or a bottle of pills. If we as a school system go down the road of gun safety, providing a deeper understanding of proper gun usage and the moral and legal limits and consequences of lethal force, is a more effective and longer-lasting piece of it. is a more effective and longer-lasting piece of it than simply gun storage. The children in our schools will one day in the not-too-distant future be adults. Will we give them the tools to teach the next generation? A far more important issue to address is why children are committing suicide by whatever means, or assaulting their friends and neighbors. Or arguably worse, people they don't even know. I'm far more interested in addressing why kids today are willing to do these things than I am in restricting in any way the law-abiding citizen's right to self-defense and their associated right given by both the US and Virginia constitutions to keep and bear arms. And if you haven't read it lately, the Virginia Constitution, in my view, is much better than the US Constitution in spelling out plain language why this matters. It says that a well-regulated militia composed of the body of the people trained in arms is the proper, natural, and safe defense of a free state. Therefore, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. And it goes on to say that standing armies should be avoided, it's dangerous to liberty. The key to gun safety is responsibility, as many have pointed out tonight. But that responsibility is not limited to how arms are stored. That responsibility includes teaching a moral foundation which respects life. To re- to reiterate, I don't have any objection to teaching gun safety. But the Virginia Beach City Public Schools do not exist, nor are they funded by the taxpayer to do public advocacy. Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
Thank you, um, I do wanna thank Ms. Anderson for, um, the changes that you did make. Um, I definitely think that it made it a lot more palatable for me, um, so I thank you for that. Um, there is one little spot, uh, in one of the wherethes, I, I was just curious, um, is there any reason that we only mourn the li- lives of students lost says lost to gun violence and firearm injuries over the last few years, uh, versus just in general? Like why, why just these last few years?
Well, it seems to be prominent in the past few years. Uh, but what would you prefer? That we say all lives lost to gun, to, to senseless gun, you know? I mean, in the past few years, it has happened, not only in our country, but it's happened locally. Uh, not only in just the region, but it's happened also in our city. So, um, the past few years, it has really, you know, been forefront in things that we worry about. And, um, that's why I said in the past few years. But past few years can go back a ways, ten years, twenty years, in the pa- I could just say past years. Would that would that suffice if I just said past years?
Uh, honestly, um, it, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be honest, that part doesn't really impact whether or not I'm gonna support it. I was just curious, um, if that was an oversight or not.
No.
Um, okay, alright, um, and then I do have a question, um, for either, um, Dr. Robertson or Ms. Lynetti. Um, so in the resolve section, which is the part I'm really here for, right, uh, resolves, that's the part that's actionable. Um, it says the school board of the city of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens of Virginia Beach to support secure gun storage and safety. Um, what are we going to do to encourage? Or, or will we be doing anything different as a division as a result of this vote? Than what we were already going to do?
Yeah, so the resolve indicates that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens of Virginia Beach to support gun storage and safety, and that would be the extent of the action.
Okay, um, and then in this further resolved, uh, school board of the city of Virginia Beach again encourages all citizens of Virginia Beach to practice safe gun storage and gun safety for the well-being of all adults and children in the city of Virginia Beach, so that encourage is also the school board's encouragement.
That's correct.
Um, there's no further action other than this resolution.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, I am going to support this resolution, I, um, I do think it's relatively reactive rather than proactive. I would much rather, um, have conversations about more SSOs in our schools, SROs in our schools. Um, I, I don't know that this is going, um, to really change anything. I feel like it's more commemorative than anything, um, but I will support it. I do find it to be relatively pro-two A, I am, um, I'm very pro-two A and, um, I will support this, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens?
Thank you. Hadn't planned on, uh, commenting, but, uh, hearing other comments, I felt compelled, uh, to share my support, uh, on this resolution. And, uh, I was excited when Ms. Anderson, uh, contacted me and said she was gonna bring it forward and asked for input. There's been discussion about whether we have jurisdiction and the right to encourage people to, to do things. Uh, since I've been on the board and since I've been a part of this district since kindergarten, we have had, uh, announcements and reminders sent home, uh, on fire safety. Encouraging, uh, I got one last year, encouraging us to make a escape plan from our home and know where we were gonna meet up, which tree we were gonna stand by, and to check our fire alarms to make sure that they were working. Could be said that's the job of the fire department, but it didn't hurt for it to be reminded from the school district. We've sent and had conversations reminding parents to lock up your opioids, medications that you're no longer using, dispose of them. Uh, handle them safely because students' lives are lost. And no, no objections to, to those things. It could be the job of the police and the CDC, but we have a platform and if it can help, lock up your chemicals, you have small children in your house. It could be the job of poison control, but we have a platform and it doesn't hurt to help make uh, safety considerations for children in our district. Since I've been on the school board and that last few years, uh, I, I hear what you're saying, Ms. Brown, it was part of my edition that I, uh, sent to Ms. Anderson. And I, I would be comfortable putting it to, we mourn the children lost through eternity through, uh, firearm issues, if that, if that makes it, uh, any difference. But since I've been on the board, each year, we have lost at least one student to a firearm death. Not, you know, just a, a kid somewhere else, you know, in the country, but in our school district. High school students, middle school students, uh, we've lost an elementary school student since I've been on the board. Uh, this, this is an important issue and if just sending the reminder out and saying we are encouraging people to do that and that we encourage the community, if it encourages one person to say, well, I, I wonder if I can get a, a gun lock free somewhere, I wonder if I can get a discounted safe, then, uh, this would be worth it in my eyes. Uh, shout out to the men and women that we have in our district, uh, with law enforcement and child protective services who have gone to autopsies and seen the children and talked to the families after an accident has occurred. Um, been to about twenty children autopsies, I hope that other workers don't have to continue to do that and if this makes a difference, uh, I think it's more than worth it, so thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment because I am an avid two-A supporter, I'm a gun owner, I have my concealed weapons license, prior military, I have worked with weapons for many, many years. And I have to tell you, secure gun storage is vitally important, um, to being a gun owner and to be a responsible gun owner and, um, you know, quite frankly, in my current district that I was elected to, we have had several situations since I have been on the board where we have lost student, students and it's been terribly sad and, um, and you know, someone asked me, as you, as you heard, I've gotten a lot of feedback about my vote, um, on, at the last meeting and you know, someone asked me, how, how do we know that this is, this is gonna make a difference? Well, you know, I've got, I just have to say that I was raised that loving, being loving, being kind, that can never hurt. Advocating for lives can never hurt. But if you advocate, or if you don't advocate, or if you don't show support, um, for being kind and, and, and having those types of respect for other people, that type of respect for other people, I mean, that definitely can hurt. We see that through, you know, suicide, we see that through different aspects of, of things that happen in our community that create a negative ripple, um, to these students. And so, what I would say is that, um, as somebody who appreciates the fact that I can bear arms in this country, as somebody who appreciates the fact that, um, I understand that having that right is, also comes with it responsibility, um, I am going to support this, thank you.
So, um, before we vote, just two things. So, don't forget, just in the past six to eight months, we had a student at Kempsville High School. We had a student from Tallwood High School, School. We had a student from the Renaissance Academy who was, um, killed at the carnival, carnival. And, um, we can't forget those things. This is an epidemic. Um, gun violence and honestly, and every ti- every night when you turn on the news, if you, when you see something about a gun death, there's always, always someone that follows in an interview that says, enough is enough, we have to do something. And so, this can be our something, to Mrs., to Mrs. Owens' point, about all the little things that we send home. Um, but then, just recently, Chief Nutigate had a conversation with Dr. Robertson, and that's where the PSA was born. Um, and the city of Virginia Beach recognizes what a, what a significant issue this is. And so, um, you know, I stand in solidarity with our, um, police departments and what they deal with, um, every day and hope that we can just send, albeit small, a message to our families, um, just to secure your guns safely, so little hands don't get them and you know, alter lives, um, for those who were, who have died and for those that are still living who now are, are paying, um, the ultimate price, um, through some form of discipline. So, any further, um, discussion? Alright, then the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes and two nays, so the motion did pass for the resolution on gun safe storage.
Thank you. Alright, item D, the Policy Review Committee recommendations, and this is one from two weeks ago, the audit, audit charter amendment. So I call for a motion to approve the Policy Review Committee's, uh, recommendation regarding the amendment of the au- internal audit charter as recommended by the PRC at its September twelfth meeting. Hmm, I think that was September twenty-fourth, was it? Or twelve? Twenty-fourth, okay. Alright, motion made by, well, yep, she, motion made by Ms. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Brown, any discussion? Ms. Manning?
Yeah, I'm just a little confused because I thought the board sent this back to PRC for us to have further conversation about it.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah, so, um, that's what Ms. Lynetti told me and I left the meeting with a, a different impression, um, than that. So if I'm as inaccurate, I apologize, um, that was my oversight. Um, but I was under the impression and I, as I had said, um, you know, if it goes back to the PRC, I would preference that the chair does not, um, meet the quorum would be my, um, or, I'm sorry, let me pull up the wording here.
Okay.
Well, I just, uh, just to the topic, I just, I remember Ms. Melnick vehemently opposing this and, uh, directing it to go back to the audit committee or the policy committee for us to review it. So I'm just con- I'm just confused at how that got changed.
It, when we reviewed the tape, it indicated that, that when I asked you, do you want this to go back, you, it, there was no indication. Then I said, do you want this going back, uh, uh, nobody indicated differently. I sat down, Ms. Brown felt that you'd pretty much resolved the issue at that point, so she thought it needed to come back for action, so that's why we put it on action. But the tape indicated, um, my intent, what I summarized was that you had wanted to go back to PRC. She felt that that was, you had already resolved the issue, it wasn't any necessary to go back to PRC.
So go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Okay, it's, and will count towards a quorum is the addition. And if it goes back to PRC, I personally am going to bring it back. Well, I, I'm gonna make, my vote would be to will not count towards a quorum. Um, that was my preference, but I was trying to be as reasonable as possible. Um, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I don't know why we would bring this back to the PRC. I know, Ms. Melnick, you had suggested striking the language, but then it would just be what it says right now. And I, I just think it was to clear up some confusion, um, and so,
Okay.
Um, that was why I, um, I thought that we had kind of left the meeting with an understanding of that, and so I was, um, that's why I thought that we should bring it to action, cuz I didn't think that any of the members of the PRC, uh, had a desire to look at it again.
Yep, um, and that's good. So again, the motion was made by Ms. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Brown, any further discussion? The voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have, uh, ten ayes and one nay, so the motion did pass for the audit charter, uh, the audit charter amendment.
Okay, so, um, it's good. And so, um, our last item on, um, action, um, is fifteen E weighted credits, and Ms. Anderson? Alright. No, it's, alright, I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve item fifteen E weighted credits. Let me read exactly what it was. It was policy six dash seven one class rank weighted bonus, weighted bonus credit dual enrollments. Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Riggs, alright. Motion made by Ms. Riggs. Yeah, see the M and the S? Yep, M, motion, Ms. Owens, it's so tiny. Okay. This, this, um, Anderson?
So in reading this, um, under, um, I think it's H under under number two, awarding bonus, okay? Um, H under number two says, honor graduation determination, a student with a three-point-o cumulative grade point average or higher will be considered an honored graduate. Then it goes on to talk about valedictorians and salutatorians and how they're determined. But we also have Latin honor system. And that's not addressed here at all. Was there a reason why that was left off since honor graduates was put in here? We have a Latin honor system that we in, in, uh, we started a few years ago, which, oh, by the way, if you've attended our graduations, it's, it's phenomenal to hear the, the Latin honors, um, being discussed at, discussed at, at our, uh, our graduations. And so, if we're gonna put in here H, honor graduation determination, we also need to put in here spelled out the Latin honor system that we use, correct? Was that a, just a oversight?
Didn't discuss that at all at PRC.
But why is it not in here if, if honor graduation is in here? Is Latin honor system somewhere in one of our other policies?
Was that just a distinction for, um, not, not for graduation, but?
Well, it talks about honor graduation, determination, it says honor graduation determination. A student, it talks about that, three-point-o cumulative grade point average or higher will be considered an honored graduate. Then it goes on, so it's in other words, we've eliminated the Latin honor system that we're Then it goes on, so it's in other words, we've eliminated the Latin honor system that we're now using.
Ms. Melnick, I think it's in a different policy than this one here.
Could we bring that up?
Let's look for that policy, but it was, it was not originally in this policy as a Latin distinction.
Right, 'cause so if it's, if it's not here, but yet honors is in here, we need to address it there as, here as well.
Ms. Brown?
Uh, yeah, so the um Latin honor system is addressed in policy five dash two nine, and so that's why it is not in this one.
Then why is honors?
Uh, that's my point. Or there. Um, do you see my point? It looks, it looks as if in this particular thing that we've eliminated the Latin honors.
Yes, Ms. Anderson, I think below where it says related links to this, um, regulation is five twenty nine. So I think it's inferred that we still have the Latin honor system.
Five twenty nine?
Because it says related links.
Okay, but I would just like it listed here along with the honors. Maybe that's redundant, but I feel like if it says under H or eliminate H, don't even talk about it here at all. If you're gonna talk about it here, then you also need to put the rest of it, all the things that go along with. 'Cause this is, it, then it goes right into valedictorians and salutatorians. My feeling is I'd like to see the Latin honor system that we currently have listed here as I and then move I down to the next letter, et cetera. So I would like to, um, I'd like to see that listed here. Now, I'd just like to make a substitute motion and add what it says under the honor, under, under Latin honors added as the next um number here under A, or make it a part of H.
And what does that do for five two nine?
I'm not sure, but if I had been on the policy committee, I would have caught that at the time.
All right. Okay, let, wait, let's just stop.
Obviously, I'm not on that committee anymore, so therefore it didn't get caught.
Okay. Um, so wait, let's just stop for a second.
Okay.
Yes, please, Mr. Delaney, yes.
If you look at the title of five two nine, it's awards for achievements, class rank and honor designations. So it's very clear to that versus what you're looking at is the weighted grades components that determine GPA. So I think that's why the Latin is there, because that is an honor designation. Yes, ma'am.
So the most important, the most important thing here is that we, we're making a huge change now and that we are now adding a weighted credit to our governor's school and dual enrollment students. And there's a related link at the bottom of that, so it's not redundant.
Right.
Are you okay with that?
Well, no, because it still says for H that, you know, we're saying honor graduation determination. And then nothing is mentioned after that in this particular policy. So I, I I argue that we need to mention it either in both places or.
Would you like to make a substitute?
I would like to make a substitute motion that, and as part of that honor graduation determination, just part of that that we add the Latin honor system as part of it there.
May I offer perhaps a different situ- uh?
Yes.
Where it says honor, honor graduation determination, maybe it would say will be made in accordance with policy rather than trying to, 'cause then I'd have to get rid of five twenty nine.
Thank you, that's better. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, is the board agreeable to that without it being a substitute motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Ms. Manning?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest removing the, you know, the honor um graduation determination part. I don't even think it's needed there. I think it fits better where it is in five twenty nine. Um, but either way, I'm fine.
Yeah, that would be an alternative. We would take out H and make I H, and then it might be cleaner that way, so there's no confusion. Sorry, to do that again, she says, suggestion would be you would take out small letter H and then we would reassign I, which is valedictorian, salutatorians would now become H. Um, and it was saying, because the next section, it doesn't affect any numbering after that. So remove H, put le, make I H, and then the rest of the policy stays the same.
I'm fine with that. Okay, Mr. Culpepper?
Ms. Lynetti, is it, does that uh, does that still make it clear that the, the weighted credits apply to uh those honors designations? I've, I've, I've thought that was the purpose of it.
Can you read it?
Uh, I'm, I gotta find it. I just passed it. Expertise in awarding credits, so you may want some of it.
Well, I like your suggestion of just stating that we would refer to policy five twenty nine in the, after it says honor graduation determination, and then the way you said it, how we refer to policy five twenty nine.
Point of order, um, Madam Chair, can I um suggest that perhaps um if there's a substitute motion that we um take that motion and have a vote on it, um, because I'm starting to get very confused.
Anyway, so I don't, so the substitute motion was to add the Latin honors.
I, I, I take that back.
You pulled it back, okay.
I agree that what Ms. Lynetti said, that we should just state honor graduation determination period, and then after that, it would refer to um poli- in accordance with policy five twenty nine.
But does it answer your question with the Culpepper?
So let's, let's go back to what it originally.
Three point O cumulative grade point average or higher will be considered an honor grad. Uh, yeah, I'm not sure that that affects the, the award of the credit there. That's just a designation. So if we were to say honor, H would read honor graduation determination will be made in accordance with policy five twenty nine. I don't think that, and y'all are gonna crack me on this one, I don't think that affects the awarding of credit under the way this reads. I think that's just how we designate them. Because I think the awarding credits is the ones, uh, with the sections above that.
We're just gonna refer to the original motion?
I, and then I think what Mr. Culpepper was concerned, does this have, and I don't read H as awarding credit. It's designating a status, so which at five twenty nine is designating a status. So I think if you just refer to five twenty nine, it doesn't affect the awarding of the credit.
Okay, then I need a substitute motion to approve the amended uh, original motion. So we did amend it slightly, so I need a substitute motion for that.
I think you read H, let me try it again. We're gonna go back to the first way I said it, which H would read honor graduation determination. Honor graduation terminate, I, I think it would strike as a honor graduation determination will be made in accordance with policy five twenty nine. And then strike out the rest of the sentence. Okay, so, okay, so you make a substitute motion to approve?
As Kami just stated. All right, do I have a second for that substitute motion? All right. Ms. Ms. Riggs, are any further discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open. Oh, yes. Ms. Ri- Ms. Owens, and then Ms. Riggs seconded. Okay, now the voting board is open.
All right, so Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes. The motion did pass for the substitute as mentioned by Ms. Lynetti.
Okay, excellent. All right. Um, does anybody have anything for committee organization or board reports? Oh, okay, okay, Ms. Franklin?
Uh, we actually did have a a gifted committee meeting um on Monday night. And we're doing some great work. I think that what we're doing in the committee is we are taking a look at um Special Education Advisory Council and um authorizing some subcommittee work to be done. So I think that that's very interesting. We have some, we actually have some vibrant participation now, um, and I think that uh the new addition of some of the committee members has been really great to bring in some additional voices. I was also very excited that we actually had a student representative um to the committee, which was really interesting to get their perspective um based on his experience in the uh, in the gifted world. Um, and so that, it's, I thought that was really good. I also just, if I could just amend my request to PRC, Ms. Brown and uh Ms. Owens, um, because there was, um, actually one of the speakers reminded me about this. But there was um a comment, and I wanted, and I know that I had a confusion about this. And I just think that maybe we have to address this in terms of future um situations that might arise. And that is, you know, if, if there would have been one more vote in the resolution last meeting, that resolution would not have passed. And so it, it, one more vote to the negative, I should say, that resolution would not have passed. So I think we talked about the majority vote, all that kind of stuff. So I think that we need to address that of, about what, what constitutes, 'cause I think that there has been confusion. Um, you know, from different board members on this, so I just wanna make sure that.
I just sent a bylaw to Ms. Brown a few minutes ago to look at where it talks about action on, and I think it's by law one forty nine, and suggesting some language that we can bring up on, and I was pointing to her, if you look at your voting board, there is a port where it says abstain. I think you could put the not voting a designation so that you can make the designation yourself on the board. We'll have to figure out how to do that, but I s- I found it by law and I sent to Ms. Brown to start working some language that we can bring to PRC because we are going to PRC um.
Okay, well, moving forward, I think that there should be some clarity in that, so, thank you.
Okay, well, I thank my colleagues for this, this evening of meaty topics and thoughtful conversation. And with that, it is eight forty and we are adjourned.